So, welcome back, everyone. And just before we get into consent, councillor Desai or councillor Mackie, did you want to do an introduction, just a quick introduction? Councillor Desai?
Your Mike.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to take this moment to introduce Graham Taylor. He's in the audience here. He's a young member, a young constituent from the municipality of Chatsworth and the County of Gray by extension. And I'd like to congratulate him. He's recently been appointed to the AMO Youth Initiative that, as you know, was announced at the last AMO conference in Ottawa. So, I'd just like to introduce him. Right now, he's a student, Ryerson. He's taking public administration, and so hopefully soon enough, we'll see him around these halls again in a different role.
Graham, do you have any words?
Nothing. I'm glad. Yeah, two words.
Well, thanks for taking interest in municipal politics or politics in itself, and I'm glad you're on the AMO Youth part of that. We look forward to seeing you. All right, we have in front of council right now, we have a consent agenda. There are a number of items on there. Are there any of those items wished to be pulled by county councillors? Okay, can I have a mover and a seconder for all those? Councillor Woodbury, councillor Millen? Any... okay, there's no discussion on them, right? So, all on paper. I just carried. See, I told you it would be done by noon. Okay, items for direction of discussion, we have the item A with regards to the community transportation update. And who would like to... Stephanie, come on up, Stephanie. I think I had that on my other agenda, right?
Just before Stephanie starts, she needed a... Okay, council, just before Stephanie begins her presentation this morning, I just wanted to remind this council a little bit of the background around the Community Transportation Initiative. We were first advised that, you know, the possibility of having this grant more than two years ago. We then, it was, you know, based on some pilot work that had been done earlier, we went through an extensive process to work with the province to get the grant that we have of at 1.8 million. What Stephanie is going to provide to you today is both the routes that were approved by the province and also the ones that we recognized as more optimal routes. But I want council to be aware of the fact that, to a large degree, the routes that are reflected in the original grant were driven by provincial priorities at the time. So, not to belabor the point, but we had a difficult challenge in getting resources at all for Highway 26. And so, that kind of underpins that. We eventually, after a lot of negotiation, were able to get them to say that Highway 26 was eligible for the project because initially it was not. And I think at this point now, we're just simply trying to work with them and to continue to build a service that's going to work well for everyone.
Well, thanks, Madam CEO. And I know Southgate was also successful with the grant also. So, welcome, Stephanie. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden McQueen. Good morning, county council. I'm here today to provide you with an update on the transportation project. When I began working on this project in July, I started by consulting a broad group of stakeholders to determine the needs of the potential riders. Consultation consisted of meeting with local partners and municipalities and potentially other municipalities that could be impacted by this transit, community groups, committees, businesses, and transit agencies. I've consulted with staff in West Gray, Georgian Bluffs, Owen Sound, Meaford, Hanover, Gray Highlands, Southgate, Chatsworth, the Blue Mountains, Wyerton, Shelburne, Orangeville, Dufferin County, and Bruce County. Businesses such as Chapman's, community groups such as Soggy Mobility, Canadian Mental Health, Launchpad. I've participated at the Senior Summit, AODA meetings, Ontario Professionals Planners Institute meeting, the Royal Winter Fair. I've also spoken with transit agencies such as the city of Owen Sound, the town of Collingwood, town of Orangeville, and Simcoe County. Through my consultation, I learned a lot about the unique needs of each population and how to best serve our residents. It was clear from my consultation that transit is no longer a want, it is a need. A few key learnings that I have taken away from my meetings are: we need to be reliable. If we want to encourage riders to leave their vehicle at home and use public transit, then we need to be reliable. Customers need to know when the bus is coming and that they can count on it. Take a phased approach. When Simcoe County introduced their transit system, they took a phased approach. This allowed Simcoe to work out any kinks along the way and correct them prior to implementing a new route. The more routes, the more complex our system will become. Simcoe County allowed riders to ride the bus at no cost at the beginning as well for a short trial period to work out those kinks. Now is the time to collect our data. With the absence of a current transit system, we need to give ourselves time to collect data to determine the ebbs and flows. Data is key. Once we begin collecting data, we will be able to efficiently leverage our assets to enhance our transit system. Transit is hard to take away. Once we start offering a transit system, it will be challenging to reduce or eliminate this system. And transit isn't cheap. Cost recovery could be between 20% to 35%. However, this will take time. Consultation has been ongoing and will continue to happen, and the more I engage, the more I am learning. In late August, Gray County released a negotiated RFP for looking for an innovative maiden grade solution. We received five bids, which ranged in experience and capacity. Some bidders had a wealth of experience, while others were new entrants into the industry. Gray County began conversations with one of the bidders. However, through reference checks, financial evaluations, and interactions, staff determined that that bidder was not the right one for us. As it became clear that contracting the entire service out would not be the best fit for Gray County, I began exploring the hybrid option you have in front of you today. As we know, transit is needed, and the survey results echoed that. On December 6th, we released a survey to potential riders. The survey received a positive response from residents residing in Gray, Bruce, and Dufferin County, totaling 1,037 responses, only three of which were not in favor. After reviewing the comments from the survey, I learned that many residents feel that this is a great initiative, and some people feel this would provide an affordable alternative to the current expensive options. Although the feedback has been positive, it is also important to validate the concerns received. Many residents are feeling that they will be missed by the current routes that are in place, as we are not serving all of Gray County. A common theme that I've heard over and over again, what about Gray Road 4? What about Hanover? What about Durham? I'm going to take you through some of the survey questions that we asked and just highlight some of my key learnings and notes that I've made along the way. I do apologize, it is difficult to see, but it was in your packages as well. So, as you can see, the most common place that people want to travel is Owen Sound. This is obvious as it is the hub and is the central point where the buses will be departing mainly from, to and from, most of our destinations. Secondly, Orangeville was a high place of destination, which connects many residents into the GTA through Go Transit. Blue Mountains was another option that many people selected, followed by Other. And I'm going to highlight Other as, although we are not going directly into all the destinations, a lot of the Other comments where people wanted to go to Collingwood, Toronto, the Greater Toronto Hamilton area, Waterloo, wealth, different places like that. So, although we are not going directly to those places, we will be creating connecting links, which I'll be talking about shortly. How would you like to pay for your travel? This one, we received equal responses for all of them, which I think is fair. Everybody likes options and convenience is nice for people, so this one was equally responded upon. How would you like to buy tickets? As you can see, there's a high response for online. So, although that is a high response, that is something that I am looking into. At this time, it is not something that we are prepared to offer, as additional infrastructure will be needed to offer that. How old are you? A lot of our respondents were our potentially retired population. I say potentially because we don't know how long people are working for, and it is indicative of what we know already is in Gray, that many of our residents are in our senior population and are looking to retire here in Gray County. I would like to note that our under 18 and 18 to 24, it is low, but that being said, many adults, our parents, responded on behalf of their children and youth. What is your current employment status? So, most people who completed the survey were working already full-time, which is great, which means that they would like to continue to use the service or they would have an interest in the service. We had a high retirement population reply to the survey, but I will touch upon the student part-time and full-time. One of the barriers to accessing Georgian College right now is a lack of transportation. So, I would like to say in hopes that if we were to offer a transit system, that those numbers would have the potential to grow. How many trips do you plan on taking in a typical month? The most common response was one to two or three to six. How would you travel to and from your stop? So, most people put drive and park a car. This is important to note because this would reduce the amount of cars that we have on the road and the amount of people commuting. It would induce our environmental impact, which we've already touched on today. As well, it's important to note that people want to park their car, which means I need to be offering bus stop locations that can offer people to park and leave their vehicle there in a safe, secure place. As well, for walking, buses will run along the main routes. So, I have noted that, yes, and I've expressed this to you before, that there is a gap in the service, that we have our main routes, yes, they're great, but how do we get everybody to those routes and home from those routes? So, I have looked at a partnership with an agency to connect riders at our bus stops to be able to get home if they would like that. It will come at an additional cost to the rider, but at least we're offering a service for them. What time of day would you like to travel? Everybody kind of said the same thing. They want to travel all the time, which is interesting because that echoes that we need transit, which is great, but it may be hard to deliver that at the hop. I also want to point out that many people selected that they wanted to travel on the weekends after 7:30 PM, which is interesting, but when I reviewed the comments, many people said they would like to have the option to be a responsible driver, which means have a drink or two and not be able to drive. This, or sorry, not drive, sorry, and this would give people that option. Would you be using the service for any of the following purposes? The main reasons people wanted to use it were fun or entertainment, which at first, when we initiated the survey, I was expecting a higher response to be for employment, but as you can see, many people are looking to reduce that social barrier and get out and be more involved in their community, which is great. Visit friends and family and then commute to and from work, as well as attend meetings or appointments. As well, I'd like to add, if anybody has questions throughout, please feel free to interrupt, and I can touch on your questions as we go along. I think it's important to start a service, and we can continue to build as time goes on. The robust systems that many individuals refer to in their comments did not become well-established overnight. This is going to take time. Offering public transit in Gray will increase access to employment, reduce our impact on the environment, decrease social isolation, and provide a greater quality of life for In addition to the information you've received today, you will also be receiving a package including the survey results specific to your individual municipality. So, those will be distributed at break, and they're the same questions, but just what This is small, but you have the packages in front of you there as well. So, in your packages, you would have received two different options, a minimum service level versus an optimal service level. As you've seen, the options are quite different, and the level of service is varied. So, I'm going to take us through the different budgets and touch on some different points as we go along. As you can see here, there are some additional costs that have yet to be accounted for, such as cameras, which are essential for the safety of all the passengers on the bus, and they will help with any disputes or negative behaviors that may occur. As well, you have ITS funding, which is quoted at approximately 110,000. This provides our buses to have the ability with GPS tracking and to have the option for AODA compliance there, where the bus will automatically call out and say what the next stop is. As well, it will be able to count our ridership data for us, how many people are getting on, how many people are getting off, and where they're getting off. The budget you see here, I'll go deeper as I flip through the different route options, but both of these budgets in front of you offer the option to have some municipal partnerships, which would allow us to have some revenue enhancement, as well as expenditure offset through grants such as the FSCM. They are very different when you look at them, and that's because we're offering a varying level of service. There is a middle ground that could be determined if you decide that you want somewhere in between the two options that are presented to you today. I'm going to start with Highway 26. So, the two different options here, I'll start with the top. The top is what the grant has asked us to deliver. The grant has asked me to deliver a service that runs five days a week with two trips a day. Yes, if you offer this top service, there is potential that there could be some riders that are stranded, or they need to be more conscious and aware of how they're going to get to and from their destination because they may not be able to get home as the bus has stopped running. That is common in many transit systems, whether you're big or small, Toronto or here. You may have to find an alternate way home. The below option, which offers way more route times and more trips per day, is obviously more expensive, but we have the option there to run potentially seven days a week or five, which we could determine here. And both of these options, it's important to note that they will be connecting into the Collingwood Transit System, which will then allow people to connect into the Simcoe System, which then they can go to Barry and connect to Go Transit there. This one's a little bit different. I've presented two very different options in a sense, where the first option, if we're meeting the grant requirements, which says five days a week for service and two return trips, it does not really connect everyone the whole way through. You would be able to go from Owen Sound to Markdale, and you could go from Dundalk to Orangeville. It's important to note, as Warden McQueen had said, Southgate did receive their own individual funding, so this is a little bit unique, that they can have a different service as they receive their own funding. The more optimal option would be going along Highway 10. As you can see, I've created a link there that connects people from Markdale to Flecherton and then turn into Dundalk. So, it opens it up there that people can travel all the way seamlessly from Owen Sound all the way to Orangeville. I also would say that these times are not set in stone. Stops have already been not determined, but I've been discussing with staff where these stops could potentially be, but until I received direction, I wasn't prepared to announce where those stops would be yet. And Highway 6. So, Highway 6, which would go from Owen Sound to Wyerton, there is potential expansion into Bruce County further. I've had discussion with both North and South Bruce Peninsula, and we will look, once we get established, at expanding further into Bruce to enhance our system and to help Gray County residents explore more of both Gray and Bruce. Both of these options at this time are the same. I'm not prepared to offer, well, I am prepared, I can offer more routes per day, but as of right now, my suggestion or recommendation would be to stick to three days per week, two trips per day, to determine the need and the desires of the riders. I'd also like to say, I did get pricing for Gray Road 4. It's not here for you today because it was not part of our grant, but I did take the initiative to get pricing on Gray Road 4, which would offer a bus that would run along Highway 4 going Durham, Hanover, Wackerton, with a connection into Flecherton, which ultimately would connect people from Flecherton to go to Owen Sound or down to Orangeville. Through internal and external consultation, it's my recommendation to lease the buses during the pilot to gain a better understanding of our needs. So, I'll flip back to our main budget page, and as you can see, I have put a variety of different factors and prices in there. So, vehicle rental would be a leased vehicle. I've looked at two different companies that are currently leasing vehicles, and they have given me quotes on different options and different sizes of buses and different things like that. Leasing and renting is essentially the same thing, but it would just give us that flexibility to determine what we want to do prior to investing fully. To lease a bus is approximately $4,000 a month. To buy a bus is $450,000 per bus. And we're looking at, if you buy buses, you need to have the buses, extra buses, so a bus in the hoist is not considered a spare bus, so we would need to have alternative buses available because if something breaks down, we need the system to keep running. Whereas when you lease, you have a little bit more flexibility as you can swap out vehicles there. It is important to note, though, when we are leasing our buses, it will cost us an upfront investment of investing in the technology, installing cameras, wrapping the buses, and doing all those things, recognizing that when our lease is over, that all that needs to be stripped and taken out and then put into our next bus. So, just wanted to provide that. I have calculated out the fuel, potential cost for fuel. From the companies that I was talking to, the buses can, the fuel tanks, sorry, can go up to 700 minimum kilometers that they can travel to approximately 1,000 kilometers they could travel on a tank of gas, which would range anywhere between $180 to $240 to fill up. When speaking with different service providers, we could, if we choose to go with First Student, which is in your package, they can offer gas fill-ups at their depots. I've also spoken with our fleet staff to see if that would be an option for where we could fill up at our different depots as well. So, those are things to be considered. The contracted services that you see in the budget, that would be, as I said in the report, single source out to First Student, which is currently providing transit for the city of Owen Sound, they're driving for them, the town of Collingwood, town of Orangeville, and Simcoe County. Promotions, we obviously need to promote our service so people know about it, and then the part-time admin, that is only specific to Launchpad. The difference in the below budget, as you can see, is the additional costs for drivers and time as the buses will be running more often, and in Highway 26, you have an option for seven days or five days a week. It is my recommendation to select the optimal level of service, as this will provide residents with a more reliable service. It's important to offer a full service so we can understand our riders better. If we do not offer a full service, riders may not use the service, which will in turn skew our data. So, we won't actually know if people want to use this or if this would help anyone if we don't put enough routes in place or enough buses running up and down our roads. So, pardon? Madam?
Thanks, Stephanie. Madam CEO?
So, just to be clear to everyone, the pricing that you see before you, those are estimates based on the consultation that Stephanie's been able to undertake yet. So, I assume that when we got into real negotiations with folks, some of those numbers might adjust. These numbers don't reflect any kind of rider revenue. There's no inclusion here of anybody paying any fare for this. So, depending on what we decide to do with that, there may be revenue there, and as Stephanie mentioned, there may be the potential for some folks who are benefiting from this system may wish to contribute to its success. That's not reflected here either.
Okay, Stephanie, do you have anything to add? Thanks for the great work there.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, I very much like the idea of having a Gray County transit system, and thank you very much, Stephanie, for all your hard work and the related staff and your consultation partners, for sure. I think a lot of work has gone into this. In terms of the optimal recommendation, I wonder if you could just speak to the idea of perhaps piloting the Gray Road 4 transit option, because if we're looking at a Gray County transit system, I would very much like that to be inclusive and really have an opportunity for all of the Gray County residents. Thank you. So, I would just be looking at all of Gray County residents to have an opportunity to experience the transit system and hopefully have a reliance on it, and it may reduce cars on the road, who knows, but what the end result will be. But have an opportunity for our Gray County residents to have full access to it. I think this is probably the time, as we're just entering into the consideration of transit, to include the Gray Road 4 line in the transit system. Could you comment on that, please?
Through you, Warden. I don't have that number in front of me today, but I can bring that back at a later date to tell you how much it would be, although the question would come, there is no grant funding for this, so there would be an additional expense, and I don't know who would be providing that additional funding.
Any comments from somebody else on that one? Okay, councillor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We talked about County Road 4 and service along County Road 4 going west, Flechton. There's still a large section going east from Flechton that would remain without any service. For example, for someone who lives in St. Hampton, it would be about a 30-minute drive either way to Thornbury or to Flechton in order to be able to use the transit. I was wondering if there was any suggestions on that. The second item, I guess, that I'd like to bring up is, and I know this is early days for it, but really, at one point, had their transit system contracted out, and when they were unhappy with this level of service that was being provided, they found that there was not much that they could do in the way of enforcing certain aspects of it. So, I'd caution our staff to be wary on that, and I know we've got very competent staff, but it's just a caution that, you know, we do want to make sure that the contract agreements have certain clauses that allow us to enforce service levels. And the third and final issue that I do want to bring up is around funding the transportation system beyond what the grant is going to do. There was an article in the Toronto Star yesterday or the day before, which talked about how Toronto is behind on funding its infrastructure, really, but included the transit systems because it chose for austerity for a number of years. And by austerity, I mean keeping the property tax low. If we're going to do this, and if we're going to expect our constituents to be reliant on a transit system that we're offering, we need to make a commitment that we're going to adequately fund this transit system rather than allow austerity to take over. And again, that is just a caution from a political side on the effects of this transit system after the grant funding has begun.
So, Stephanie, you got a few questions there?
Through you, Warden. So, to answer your first question there, east past Flechton, I have received that comments from many people that they noted that where they live will not be served. I think it's important to start first with something. We have to start with a main route, and then as time goes on, we can look at expanding the ridership. Simcoe County has done that themselves, they started with a base couple routes, and as they've gone on, they have added some more. What they have found is, again, once you put in that route, it's very hard to take it away, so we want to be confident when we add those routes that the ridership numbers will be there. The question does come up often, what about an on-demand service? What about more of that RideWell? What Wellington County's doing? What Uber's doing? What's happening in Anisville? I have looked into all of those options. I have had the conversations with the providers that can service- that can service that kind of, that model, which would be purchasing technology so we could have it right and ready to go in vehicles and have an app there so that people could just book their ride at home. It would pick them up at home and deliver them to where they want to go. Now, the catch with that is that it's a completely different system than what we are doing here today. The grant has funded a conventional transit system, which is why we are focusing solely on that first. And as time goes on, we can look at adding more. If that is a need and a wish of Gray County, I'm happy to look at that. And I have already investigated a lot of those options, and I am aware of companies that could deliver that service. But it is a more robust option, and there's lots more things to consider as, you know, insurance, who's going to be driving, how are we ensuring the safety of our residents? So that would be a quite different service, but it is an option and on the table. But again, everything does come at a cost.
Thanks, Stephanie. I have Counselor Burley next, and then I have a few others that my clerks touched on there. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Stephanie, a great report. I wasn't going to say anything, but it wouldn't be right unless I did. By having that route going to Wireton, George and Bless will be offering a ticket anywhere in the world. So you've got to think about that.
Through you, Warden. Yes, I am aware of the airport there, and the conversations about expanding the routes to ensure that we stop at the airport is definitely on the table. I have looked as well. It's a little unique when you go up the peninsula because going up Highway 6, you kind of miss some of the main industrial parks. So I have looked at how we can kind of loop off a little bit, make sure that we're not missing anything crucial on Highway 6, but loop off to go past the industrial areas so that way we can enhance employment options and then kind of come back around. So the airport, I can definitely look at adding that, making sure there's a stop.
I think Counselor Burley, the county council is waiting for that complimentary flight. Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Warden. Maybe we could put wings on those buses and they could fly. We could kill two birds with one stone. Just for clarification's sake, on the route from Meaford to town of Blue Mountains, it shows stop in Thornbury and stop in town of Blue Mountains. Does that mean Craig Leith or Blue Mountain Resort? Or, okay, thank you.
Through you, Warden. The Blue Mountains meant stopping at the resort. So we will be stopping at the base or at the very first point that you could stop at, and then it would connect individuals into the Collingwood Transit System. We've been asked not to go all the way in because it would be rather cluttered if we went all the way into the village because there's already other buses going there. So we would connect people into other options there, and Thornbury is a separate stop.
Sir Robinson?
Thank you, Warden McQueen. I see this transit opportunity as a great investment for Gray County residents and newcomers coming into our county. I would very much ask my colleagues around the horseshoe to consider including Gray Road 4 right at the beginning of this. We definitely need the stats and the financial component attached, but I would like to see that consideration for Gray Road 4 and the connection and, you know, the start to finish wherever that may end as part of an all-inclusive transit system right at the beginning for Gray County. And acknowledge that if it is not part of the overall, that at least be looked at as a pilot to earn its wings, if you will, just to go on the theme of the last few speakers. But I would encourage my colleagues to support that. And if required at the appropriate time as the mover of this, I would also look to add in Gray Road 4 in the motion.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie? So that'll come back from the mover in a second to discuss that part. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Thanks, Stephanie, for all the work you've done in regards to transportation. It certainly is a requirement for the county. Just wondering, though, without people being able to get to these fixed routes, how successful are we going to be? And should we be doing the two pieces together? I mean, the system that you reflected on in Wellington, the ride-share program, I believe, I think we really need to look at that because with our, you know, our geography, you know, unless you're living in one of the built-up areas, you can't get, you know, if you don't have, you know, any transportation, then you can't get to where these fixed routes are traveling. So I'd really like to see, you know, the Wellington model. I was, you know, really happy to hear when you had first mentioned about the Wellington model and, you know, there's certainly the possibilities that are there for that in Gray County. So I'd like to see, you know, I certainly examine that part. Secondly, as far as mobility transit, is there any option for the county as far as mobility? I think there's four or five members around the horseshoe that currently have specialized mobility, you know, Owen Sound, West Gray, Chatsworth, South Gate, Meaford, Hanover. Is there any way that we could, you know, try and have those services available throughout the entire county? Right now, it's piecemeal, you know, and we're looking at transportation as a whole. It is disjointed right now. And, you know, we're all putting money in different pots. And if that could all be amalgamated into one, we might be able to have a more robust system.
Through you, Warden. Those are all very valid points. And I think in regards to specialized transit, so our service is going to be accessible. It will be accessible to individuals that can ride semi-independently. So they can get themselves to the bus stop, they can get on the bus. If they use a mobility device or they need assistance getting their device secured while on the bus, our drivers are prepared to do that, and they will be trained to secure wheelchairs on the bus as that is legislation required for those to be. The nice part about our system being accessible is individuals will not need to get out of their aid and sit on a seat. They can remain in their device, which is great. So, and that comment did come up as a question in the survey results. What about people who are in wheelchairs and do they have to get out of their device? So no, they won't be able to, need to, sorry. Our buses will be accessible. And that's something that I'm committing to making sure that we do that. In regards to the other services that are currently offered, we do have home and community support services that are offering a more specialized service as well as soggy mobility. So those two services are unique in that they pick people up at home and then take them to their appointments. This service is not looking at doing that. You can, as I said, if you can get to our bus and you can get yourself to your appointment, then that's fine. You can use our system. But if you're needing more of a door-to-door, more specialized, you're still going to need to use those kinds of services. That being said, when you're referring to an on-demand model of the ride sharing, yes, we could have some buses or, sorry, some vans or cars that would allow people who are in wheelchairs to use those vehicles as an accessible alternative. So is it possible? Yes. But I would need that direction from council as a whole to guide me to look for that.
Stephanie, just to make sure I'm clear, the Wellington model would have accessibility, availability? It could. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just for clarification, Stephanie, is it correct or am I correct in thinking that without the subsidy, we'd be running about a three-quarters of a million-dollar deficit here with everything in? Is that what your projection is roughly? So the three-quarters of a million-dollar deficit is with the subsidy calculated in, correct?
If you go to a level of service that exceeds the minimum of the grant, we can run the minimum level of service within the funds that are available within the grant. Everything over and above that, so when we talk about an optimal level of service, and that's where you get to 400 and change for a five-day-a-week service on 26 and six and change for a seven-day-a-week service and everywhere else. So whatever we would do on 4 would be over and above. And I guess that's the question that Stephanie has on the slide here is, you know, if you want to give us a sense of where you're comfortable money-wise, like if we were to say for 2020, we were prepared to go to 1% on the levy to fund transit, and then that's a number that we can try and optimize. I'm just pulling that as one methodology for all of this. Or tell us a hard number, or tell us that you don't want to see anything additional on the levy and that we should just work within the grant money to start with.
So if I could, then I'd ask, what are the metrics? I see you're asking for an RFP till 2023 for the leases on the vehicles. So what are the metrics? When we get to that point, you're going to use to determine whether this is successful or not? Because I'm guessing that it's not going to be a moneymaker, right? Greyhound tried, and it didn't work for them. So I'm wondering what the metrics are going to be to determine whether this is a winner or not, because there's reasons why Greyhound's not doing it.
Through you, Warden. So I have looked at some different form of performance measures, which again, I can bring that back at a later date to outline exactly how I will be measuring the success of this. We'll be using both qualitative and quantitative, though, because some of it will be based on, do we have riders or not? Are people happy with the level of service, the times of day? So through surveys and consultation, I do know City of Mississauga used to, and I'm sure they still do, they had people ride the bus and ask the riders questions. So we can do things like that as well.
Counselor Fleet, and then Counselor Sauer.
Thank you, Warden. Great report, Stephanie. I support Counselor Robinson's motion that we should be including Highway 4. The other question I got for you is regarding parking. Is that going to be an extra cost to the county if we have to, say, have a parking lot in the city of Owen Sound for parking your vehicles? And who's going to be liable for those vehicles?
Through you, Warden. What I'm looking at in regards to where the bus stops will be located is that they will all be in areas that parking already kind of exists. So through different conversations, we've looked at, you know, arenas that have additional parking available and capacities there. I'm also working with our legal team to arrange for bus stop agreements. So anywhere where we have a bus stop, an agreement will be in place to ensure liability and risk are being assessed appropriately.
They'd park in front of a bank and leave their car parked there for the day, which would take away from local businesses or a dress shop or whatever. That would be one of my concerns.
And that is very valid. And what I'm doing before I announce any bus stop location is ensuring I chat with each of the municipalities. They are the ones who are determining where the bus stop locations will be because they have the best handle on the economy and the needs of their communities. I'm not deciding that, so I'm letting them and allowing them to consult me on where they should stop.
Counselor Sauer?
Yes, and thank you for this report. And we have had a transit program like this that we do with South Georgian Bay. It goes from Missauga Beach to Collingwood and then to the village and then passes through other parts of Craig Leith as well, which I see this will link into. We had a few lessons we learned from that, is we started off with a very restricted schedule to save money and therefore we got no riders because people said, well, this schedule doesn't work for me. So, and, you know, and when you look at the cost of a transit program, I think we should not ignore that transit that gets people to work and also to businesses actually creates revenue. For instance, we have a whole bunch of Georgian college students that are probably sitting on the weekend in Owen Sound saying, boy, I'd like to go work at Blue Mountain, but I don't have a vehicle. And if, even if I did, it would cost me 30 bucks a day to travel back and forth in terms of gas insurance and everything else. So, you know, that's why, you know, I don't know if we need to go to the seven-day option, but certainly I've heard from the businesses at the village that they really support this program, but they would like it to be working on Saturdays and Sundays. So if we're looking at costs, maybe we reduce Mondays and Tuesdays, which are slow days in the village, or we consider running a different schedule during peak ski season and, you know, like March break. And where there, right now, there's 600 jobs there. And we were talking about social issues in Owen Sound earlier with, when we looked at that task force. And certainly getting people to the jobs at Blue Mountains would mean that there are less people sitting idle. And particularly on weekends, it's important. So I think whether we go with five or seven days, we should certainly look at the weekend. And I see also from the chart there that most of the people were looking at this for visiting people and entertainment and not drinking and driving. And I see that you would have to leave the village at 7:29. So that's probably a bit early for drinking and driving to even be a problem if you went there for dinner. So the question is, like, given what people are going to use it for, perhaps we could look at maybe, you know, dropping a few trips in the middle of the day when people aren't likely to be visiting and going out for entertainment because most of the uses indicated those were the prime activities that they wanted to replace their car for. So, but it doesn't seem like you're going to have a lot of time to have a good time because you've got to leave pretty early.
Through you, Warden. In regards to your comments about the times that the buses are running, those are just drafts, nothing is set in stone. So we can change that.
Okay, so Counselor Kettner.
So I, thank you, Stephanie. Good report. But I don't think we're doing a very good job of answering your questions. So looking at your questions, I think I've heard that we need to start with a fairly optimal service so that people will be interested in engaging. But secondly, I think that the success of a service is going to be very dependent on the cost, the fare. And it doesn't sound like we've even considered fares. And I can clearly see that we're not going to be far down the road when this group of people is going to be very interested in cost recovery on this system because we want it, but I don't think we can afford to subsidize it completely. And so I think we really need some information on a competitive rate that would encourage people. I'd be very surprised if counselors in Hanover or in Meaford would get on the bus to come to county council without a real incentive. And, but, so part of it is, if I could save, you know, a great deal of money on running my car by getting on the bus, that would be good. I think that you have to review it very, like every two or three months. And in Meaford, we've had the experience of trying to get re-elected having closed down a bus service. And whether we will be re-elected or not is still to be seen. So I think you've got to review it very frequently and be cognizant of, as I say, how we can avoid getting into a position where we are going to have to actually decline the service after establishing it. Thank you.
Through you, Warden. In regards to the cost, so in the grant application, it was already stated what we would be charging as a fare. So along Highway 26 and along Highway 10, the cost would be $5 for an individual to ride the bus. And going from Owen Sound to Wireton would be about $3. The reason that we haven't predicted yet what the cost recovery would be is because I don't know how many people will be riding the bus. I could give you a number, but it could be, it's just a guess. So the pricing of what the bus will be costing is already predetermined based on the grant. That being said, I did ask that question in the survey. It was a little skewed, and lesson learned. I left it open for people to put what they thought. And some people who filled out the survey aren't necessarily an accurate representation of our general population because some people said, well, I could afford $15 to ride the bus to go from Owen Sound to Orangeville. Yes, that's lovely, but that would be only if you're using it for a one-time thing. That's not affordable for people who want to use it for employment. So that would be why the cost needs to be as low as it is so that way people can actually afford to go to work and still make money while using our transit system.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I'm going to answer the first, your second question first. I would be most interested in an evaluation duration of a year with checkpoints that perhaps could be three in six months. So just to check in at county council to see, you know, ridership, where, what's the base? Is it increasing? Are the county residents looking for a different type of service? You know, just input overall. So I think a year might be a really great starting point for an evaluation. So I think a year might be a really great starting point for an evaluation. I'm going back and forth with, for question number one, optimal service level versus minimal, only because of your statement that says, if you have something in place, it's hard to take it away. And I want to ensure that, as part of being on County Councils, that if we're providing a service, that that's something that, if it is working, that it remains, and it, along the way, gets enhanced. So I guess I'd be looking for, as my voice goes strange, pardon me, your comment on minimum versus optimal, and also the idea of really enhancing the service so that we can include that Highway four corridor. I just don't want to miss that opportunity, that if we're starting with a transit system, that it does include all of Gray County options.
Through you, Warden. So in regards to your questions there, the difference between minimum and optimal, I could, I can play both sides for both of those points, the benefits for both. At the end of the day, it comes down to cost. What can we afford, and what are we prepared to do? It's always easier to add, of course. If we have our minimal level of service, and we're finding out more people want to ride it, we can always add. But there comes the caution of, will people use it? Can they rely on it if it's not enough times a day for them? So that's where it kind of gets tricky. But the main factor between the two of them is cost. What can we afford, and what are we prepared to increase our taxes on? Or how are we going to find this money? So that, I think, is the big factor between the two of them.
Counselor Woodbury.
Thank you. You've partially answered what I was going to ask. When we're looking at the budgets, I think we really need to look at income with it. And I know with, like, the Smart Transit, they get gas money. So I think, I don't know whether we qualify with the grants we have now, but in the long term, I'd like to see a little bit more on that side of the table. What are our potential incomes for this? Because right now, we're looking at a lot of money to add on to the tax base, but it might not be that. And like you say, it's hard to tell ridership and things like that, but even a minimum kind of an idea, and where we could make income, whether it's advertising on the things, or on the buses, or, you know, like I say, gas tax, or whatever. That would give us a clearer picture of, I know we're going to lose money, but how much?
So those are really good points, I think, from representatives from Southgate in a sense of where's the extra revenue coming from? Because I was thinking about advertising too. And could there be a sponsorship come from, if you're going across Gray Road four from maybe the Slots Park, or from the Blue Mountains, could there be a sponsorship on that bus that helps promote the Gray Road four, or changing the scheduling in the Blue Mountains? If they were sponsoring some of that through a decal on the bus, or something like that? So there's a revenue stream that they're sort of partners, but they're being recognized for those partners? I don't know, do you have any comments to that, Stephanie?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I have looked into options, but at this time, I'm not able to commit to what those options could be. Those conversations have begun with various partners, but at this time, I have nothing to commit to.
And also, climate change from the federal side, is there any funds there? Because you're actually saving people from driving, is there, maybe there's something there? Counselor Body, you've been patient.
Just, I can tell you, with our city buses, we run eight, eight to six? Five days a week, Monday to Friday. About 22% of the cost of running those buses comes from fares, rates, advertising, about 20% from gas tax. So it's approximately 60, or close to 60%, that comes from the taxpayer side. So that, this, I think, will be different. I'm not sure that the numbers will translate to a rural setting, but that, just to give you a kind of an idea.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, but there's a lot of discussion that's happened here about enhancing, and you have these questions. What are you searching right at this point, Stephanie? What would you like?
If the, the points there of the questions that I had asked seeking direction, if I could receive direction on those, whether we can single source to, for student, if council. We didn't touch on the TPI governance agreement. I can briefly touch on that. We had a presentation, myself and the purchasing manager from Metro Links and their Transit Procurement Initiative. What that does is it gives us bulk buying power. Many, many municipalities that offer transit are already using this TPI program. And we are simply just asking for permission to join the governance agreement. It does not commit us to anything. It just allows me to investigate further on bulk buying and purchasing power. And the other question I have is, what level of service would you like?
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Any further comments from, okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Going for the RFP, there's some conversation about the optimal. Do you need that at this point? Madam CEO.
So the intent was that with the direction, as the, when the resolution is drafted here, that Stephanie would undertake those actions, and then we would be bringing back a report for you before we actually executed those agreements. So there is going to be another opportunity for you to provide comment. I'm looking around the table, and I'm hearing from folks that you're comfortable with something over and above the minimum, and you want us to sharpen our pencil and do the best that you can. And so maybe that's what we'll do, is, is we'll try to come up with our best information as far as what would be a reasonable level of service, and what is the best bottom line we can bring back for you as far as looking at every kind of revenue stream, as Counselor Woodbury's indicated.
Okay, thanks, Madam CEO. So we have a motion in front of us, it's been moved in second, just hang on there for a second. And I think it's very key, I think Counselor Hicks brought it up earlier on this morning, that committing transportation is a very important aspect of Gray County's business. And I think this is sort of that crossroad, is us here at the county is moving forward is, we're, you know, we're making this decision, and I think you mentioned it, Stephanie, once you provide it, it's pretty hard to take. I think Counselor Kettner, you mentioned that too, but once you provide something, it's pretty hard to take it away. It's like an arena or something, right? So, so I, I mean, you know, this is that, that point of moving forward with that, but also it's connecting, it's connecting with those other providers of also transit too, right? So, so the motion's on the floor, any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Robinson.
Just my earlier discussion that I would like within this motion that we could include the Gray Road four option, and whether that becomes a pilot project, or information back that talks about the financial component. Just wanting to keep it all-inclusive for Gray County, and I think this is a good juncture by which we could do it, because it's the start of the transit considerations. I think what we'll do is, we'll just take that direction, and we'll bring, we'll bring back that as part of the package of information. We'll make sure that we explore the pricing. And so when we come back, that will be another discrete line for council to consider.
Is that okay, Counselor Robinson?
Absolutely, thank you.
You're still on. Any further comments, Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Warden. So, you know, I agree with this piece, but if we wanted Stephanie to further explore the Wellington model, does a separate direction need to be given for that? To get more information on how that would, you know, supplement what we're looking at here?
I think the challenge that we have is with regard to the way that the grant agreement with the province is structured. And the challenge is that that has presented to us when it came to actually determining how we could maximize the grant funds and still satisfy the transfer payment agreement.
In addition to Madam CEO, it can be explored, but understanding that it is completely outside of the grant, similar to Gray Road four, and would need to be funded separately, and has no grant funding currently.
So I'd like more information, I guess, on the Wellington model, because maybe it's a complete cost recovery. Maybe the bill goes to the person that's utilizing the service. It's just a matter of making it available to people.
Thank you, Warden McQueen, it kind of jumped my feet. You can only charge what you can charge everyone else for accessible busing. So you can't generate, if your fare is five bucks, then your fare is five bucks. So if you're trying to do a specialized, it can only be $5. So it doesn't cover the cost, it loses more money. If you're time boat specifically, you weren't. Sorry.
Counselor Mackey?
No, so I certainly wasn't talking specifically about specialized transit. And specialized transit that we're involved with now, the fees are much greater than $5 a trip. It's based on the number of kilometers that you're traveling, and from where you're traveling. So people are paying, you know, if they need a trip to London, they're paying $200 or $300 for that trip to London possibly, because of the length of time, you know, they're paying the staff person the length of time that they're on route. So it's based on, one, the kilometers, and the length of time that they have a staff person tied up. At least that's how the smart system's working.
Any comments to that? I guess the only question I would say is, is the school bus providers sometimes do sub their buses out for school trips and stuff. Is that something that can be done here also?
Mr. Warden, yes, it is something that is possible. However, it is challenging to work with school bus operators in the sense that their buses are only available for a short period of time, because they're very dedicated to making sure the kids get to and from school. So it kind of takes you out of service during those times. And also, they only allow, like, it would have to be just our, our people on the bus. We could never involve children and all that. In regards to Counselor Mackey's questions, perhaps I bring back the preliminary costs that I've already investigated to this point. I could bring that back in my next report, including it with Gray Road four as a consideration at that time.
I would certainly appreciate that, you know. It'd be good information when we're looking at the entirety of a transportation system through Gray.
Counselor Swerber.
Yes, I was just wondering, in sourcing this, have you had any discussions with Collingwood Transit? They already run buses, and perhaps there could be some collaboration between that transit system and ours, and creating some efficiencies in terms of, because they're up to 200, well, I don't know what they're up to. I think they were projected to be at 250,000 riders this year. That's up considerably. And I think they're above their projections now that they're running more frequent rates. But the thought did cross my mind that maybe there's a chance to collaborate with them on buses, and leasing buses, and then that would maybe increase the utilization of the vehicles as well.
Stephanie.
Through you, Warden. Yes, I'm always open to collaboration with any agency, so I can continue those conversations with their manager.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the discussion around the table, and thank you very much for all your expertise to our CAO. So in this discussion, and I, I'm listening to what Counselor Mackey's saying with regard to that Wellington North, Wellington model, rather. And I'm wondering, I would really like it, if we could just add another line to our motion here for, to report back with regard to Wellington and Gray Road four. And that way, our residents of Gray County will see that it's not only the action, positive action being taken for the transportation, but then there's just additional move forward for consideration. And I really like to see the validity of that anchored in the motion. So as the mover, I'd very much like, as it's being articulated right now, and for that information to be brought forward with regard to a pilot for the Highway four corridor, and the additional information with regard to Wellington. This way, it's very articulate and representative for Gray County as a whole, and our residents can see that there's a much bigger picture that we're taking a look at. And I would just look to the seconded for that.
So I guess from a clerk's perspective, we're all right doing this? If the seconded is okay with this? Counselor Potter, okay? The motion now has been changed a little bit. We're sort of moving forward on getting that information. Any further conversation or discussion? Does everybody understand the motion that's in front of them? They see it there, any questions to that addition? Okay, seeing none. And just, I guess, looking at further, earlier conversation we had this morning about connecting the dots, our urban and rural settings. This is a great opportunity to do that from a transportation perspective. Seeing there's other questions, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Okay, so we're going to take, we're going to stop right now? Hang on, just hold on for a minute. So we can, if you can, your indulgence to do the kids camp, because it's sort of, they've been here, and, and, that's okay? You guys got up pretty early this morning. You guys are up pretty early this morning down there in Southgate, weren't you? Come on forward, and, and welcome.
Excellent, thank you so much, Warden and council. This will be really quick after the last report, but I do have Laura Arnold with me, who is the heritage interpreter from Gray Roots, who's specifically responsible for all children's programming at Gray Roots. So I wanted her here in case you had any particular questions, because it's quite the impressive programming lineup that they have at Gray Roots. So as you know, quality programming is an absolute cornerstone of everything that's happening at Gray Roots and Kids Camp, because of that educational component. Comparative research that they've been doing over the last little while has shown that we're now the least expensive kids camp available in all of Gray County, and moving into most of Bruce. So we need to look at that, because we're not keeping up with the cost of doing business anymore. We want to ensure that we remain competitive while offering those world-class educational programming, maintaining a successful track record, of returning participants and happy families. This is a regularly sold-out program for March break, and straight through all of summer camps. Gray Roots, at this point, is a leader in offering these educational quality programs. And staff have been working hard to purposely attract and hire summer students from the educational field, teachers in training, or early childhood educators, so that we really have that key focus. And we know that having that knowledge and experienced staff means that our participants are going to be benefiting from an even better experience. Our fees have not changed since 2011, 2012, so it's been a while since they've been reviewed. But the number of children has increased over those years. We are now at the maximum allowable, though. We cannot bring any more children into the programs based on the staffing complement that we have at Gray Roots. So that growth is not an option without further expenses and staff. The programs run 8:30 to 4:30, but by the time you add early and late drop-off and pickup, the programs are running five days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So with the increased number of participants requiring advanced care, the changing need on our bottom line is also quickly advancing. So what we have provided here is a financial resources, the implication, just to show what the current pricing levels are, what the proposed, you'll see it's $3.50. It's not a large increase that we're asking for, but also proposing a seven-day P.A. day bundle for members and non-members to try and keep those programs growing, because they are running all year, and they're scheduled by the school board, so we know when they're coming. What we'll also be asking by including these in the bylaw, which will be coming to council, but we'd like to get it in there sooner than later, if possible, is that we keep looking at these fees, and we don't leave it for that long of a period next time. We want to do an annual review of where these fees are, so that, again, we can remain competitive, but we don't fall behind that cost of doing business. So that is our report. If you have any questions, or you'd like to know anything specific about the children's programs, Laura could answer that for you.
Thanks, Stephanie, thanks, Laura. Any questions to the report? Counselor Robinson.
Sorry, I just want to identify that I have a Gray Roots membership, and, so I'll fill out any appropriate paperwork to that regard to identify if required. But I just want to extend a congratulations. I know the programs are really great, the firefighter exhibit that was there, and then certainly under the canopy, that extends over to adult participants is always great too. So, well done.
Counselor O'Leary?
I missed that, you said you were going to do this annually? I was going to suggest a five-year forecast, so you didn't have to increase the prices every six, seven years or something. But you're going to do it annually?
Through you, Warden. We'd like to look at all of the fees and services this year, and then make a plan if it's an annual review going forward. But that is still to be determined. But right now, this is the first one we need to look at, but as far as Gray Roots is concerned, we need to look at all of our fees and services, because it's been about the same timeframe that they've been looked at.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Well, thank you very much, Savannah and Laura. And we'll break for lunch right now.
Well, thank you very much, Savannah and Laura, and we'll break for lunch right now.
All right, welcome back, everybody. I hope you everybody had an enjoyable lunch and thanks again for that lunch that was provided. What's so funny?
Some comment about a parole officer.
Oh, well, I missed that one. Okay. Oh, yes. All right. Now, moving on to item C on discussion purposes, insurance, WSIB insurance coverage renewal. Sandra, come on up. I have a mover and a second for that. Councilor Woodbury and Councilor Millen, you guys are like those guys in the Muppets, you know, the guys up there in the Muppets.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton and members of County Council. The first report before you is the annual insurance renewal for the WSIB catastrophic loss insurance. The County of Gray became a Schedule II employer in 1998, so essentially we self-insure the costs of our WSIB or workplace accident claims. The majority of other employers in Ontario would be Schedule I, which means they're insured directly through the WSIB. Benefits received by an injured worker are the same, such as loss of earnings, healthcare, et cetera, whether you're under Schedule I or Schedule II, so that part does not affect the injured worker. WSIB charges a Schedule I employer a premium based on a percentage of payroll. And under the new changes that have coming up for Schedule I employers for 2020, those rates will change based on, will be set and change in future years based on the claims history for that employer. Under Schedule II, WSIB invoices the County of Gray and other Schedule II employers for all claim costs associated with a particular claim, plus an administration fee that they set to help pay their, their costs of managing the claim. We don't have any choice to, but to allow WSIB to continue that process as a Schedule II employer. So at Gray County, departments are charged a premium based on a percentage of the payroll that their employees cost each day. And that premium is collected and put into our WSIB fund, and we use the, the revenue collected from the other departments to pay the costs of the invoices that WSIB sends us from time to time. So the rates that we charge our departments are reduced for most departments. So, for example, paramedic services in 2019, the Schedule I rate for them was seven, sorry, 7.09%. And we charge paramedic services 3.05%. So it's roughly 57% below the Schedule I rate, which is one of the reasons why the county made the decision to move to Schedule I back in, in 1998. So long-term care department is currently paying the 2019 Schedule I rate because we need to collect that amount of revenue in order to pay the claims that come out of that department. So, so when we collect that revenue, we pay the invoices that WSIB charges us, but in order to protect ourselves, we have to have an insurance level in place to, if we have a catastrophic claim or as claim costs continue over time. As a Schedule II employer, the county is responsible for the cost of the claim for the lifetime of the claim. So those costs don't go away. They hopefully get reduced because at some point the worker is no longer eligible for loss of earnings once they reach a retirement age, as an example. But healthcare would continue until that injured worker passes on. So we currently have our insurance through Chubb Insurance Company of Canada. They've been our insurer for many years and our broker, Jardine Lloyd Thompson, which is now changing or merging with Marsh. They continue to search for the market to see what they can do to find alternate sources of insurance, but there isn't, there really isn't anything out there in Canada because it's not a common thing. As I said, most employers would be a Schedule I employer. So this renewal is up from 2019. Part of it is compounded from the increase in the maximum earnings that WSIB sets for what it's going to pay claims on. Or you get cost of living increases and so on that increase our salaries. And in addition, the insurer looks at our claims history, looks at the claims that we have that might trigger going into that insurance. And so they've factored in an adjustment for their, their books as well. So this insurance will kick in when the cost of a, a claim exceeds 500,000. So the county self-insures or is, are willing to pay the expense for the first 500,000. We have not had a claim hit this 500,000 mark, but we will be probably in, in 2020 or 2021.
Anything else, Sandra? Okay. Any questions to the report from County Councilor? County Council? Councils whoever.
Yes, did I hear you say that departments are billed on the basis of their payroll? So my question is then, why wouldn't be, they be billed on a percentage of their claims? Like their total claims, so that it becomes a little motivational not to have any.
In a sense, we, we do that in a sense. So we group it by types of employers. So we have paramedic services as their own rate group. We have long-term care as their own rate group, and we have the rest of the corporation as its own rate group. So paramedic services and the other rate groups excluding long-term care are really having a savings by having a lowered rate, so they're paying 57% below the posted Schedule I rate. Long-term care because their claims are, are higher or meeting the needs of the full premium, they don't get the break. So what will happen is if that trend continues, their surcharge is going to be a higher percentage.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions then? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Pose, that's carried. One more.